If you don't mind standing for the prayer and the pledges, let's hear the flag.
Heavenly Father, as always, we come to you appreciative and thanking you for this day, for this time together, for this council, all those present, all those watching online. We pray that you're with us, you bless us with your grace, your love, your mercy, your provision, your wisdom, and just your unending love. In Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I appreciate everybody being here this afternoon. We'll go ahead and get started on the agenda. The agenda's been in front of the council. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay. Hearing none. The chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is dispersments of April 29th and May 6th. Council's had time to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments, council?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, that the chair moves that the disperses be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. First on the agenda is, we got a proclamation, and first would be St. Michael's Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. So you guys want to come on up? Madam Secretary, when you get a chance, you want to go ahead and read the proclamation into the record, please?
Proclamation Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the streets and roadways of Talbot County, and whereas the county is proactive support initiatives that promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in our community, and whereas motorcycles offer a practical and economical way to travel, contributing to reduce fuel usage, less wear on our roads, and helping to alleviate traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is important that all residents of our county and state become aware of motorcycles on the roads and understand the importance of safe motorcycle practices, and whereas the Midshore Chapter of ABATE of Maryland, Inc., plays a vital role in communities throughout the state by continuously promoting motorcycle safety and educating the public, and whereas by working together, all roadway users can contribute to a safer environment on the roads of Talbot County and throughout Maryland. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Talbot County, and call upon all motorists and citizens to join together in a community-wide effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County, the sixth day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Welcome. Welcome, county.
Thank you.
How you guys? Good. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. You introduce everybody if you'd like.
I've got a couple standing behind me. This is Mike Mann.
He's going?
He's with our Caroline County Representatives, and Tom is our Caroline County Director.
Okay.
Mary Ann is, she wears two hats. She's in our chapter, but she's also the State Representative for the Motorcycle Riders Foundation, which is a national organization.
I got you.
I wear two hats as well. I'm the director, overall director for Midshore Chapter, and the executive director for the state of Maryland.
Wow, okay, great.
We'd like to really thank the council for providing this opportunity to come in front of you. This is a nationwide movement that we try to get every year in May. We usually convince DOT and MVA and the governor's office to participate. We get proclamations from as many counties and the governor's office. They've got the overhead signs going during the month of May reminding you to look twice for motorcycles. We have three events throughout the state at MVA branches promoting motorcycle safety and awareness and providing what they call fast track licensing for motorcyclists during the month of May and extend it throughout the rest of the year.
Great.
Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you very much.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything?
No, I guess I don't really have much to add to that. What I do is on a federal, on a national level, MRF is the Motorcycle Rights Organization that lobbies in Washington where ABATE is in Annapolis, and so our ideas and beliefs are not always specifically aligned, but we're all for the safety of motorcyclists.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Appreciative, as always, every year for you guys coming back and accepting our proclamation. Appreciate all that you guys do and bringing awareness and keep up the great work. Thank you.
I'll say the same thing. Thank you for the work that you're doing to raise the awareness of these safety issues, and thank you for what you're doing to save lives.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Get your motors running. Get that on the highway and safe.
Come on up, guys.
We need a motion. I'll second. Hold tight, hold tight.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have another proclamation, very important, Correctional Officers Employees of the Week. Madam Secretary, could you read those, please?
Proclamation Correctional Officers and Employees Week, May 4th, 2025 through May 10th, 2025. Whereas correctional officers and employee staff, the Talbot County Detention Center for the purpose of maintaining custody, security, control of every inmate every hour of every day of every week of every month of every year, and whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are essential to the county's criminal justice system and public safety by not only maintaining custody, security, and control of individuals committed to the detention center, but also by creating opportunities for inmates to resolve those personal issues that led to their incarceration. And whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are responsible for the administration and operation of a variety of programs and services beyond the walls of the detention center, including but not limited to work release, electronic home monitoring, and community service, and whereas the important work of correctional officers and employees rarely receives the recognition from the public it deserves, yet the professionalism, dedication, and courage routinely exhibited by these employees in the performance of assigned duties is worthy of and deserves our utmost respect. And whereas Talbot County is most fortunate to employ this highly professional, deeply committed, and extremely capable cadre of correctional officers and employees. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens of the county to recognize, acknowledge, and appreciate the many contributions made by these individuals to the safety of our community and to the quality of life enjoyed by all residents of and visitors to Talbot County, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County, the sixth day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Joe, you want to come on up? Well, welcome.
Hi, I'm Joe Hughes, the Director of Corrections. This is Cindy Green, my Deputy Director, Captain Johnson, Lieutenant Slaughter, Lieutenant Fields, Captain Amanda Tonden, Kenny Rogers, and Cody Ireland.
Well, welcome. Welcome, guys.
I'd like to thank you for the acknowledgement. We feel appreciated all year long from the council. It's not just this week. This is our week, but we feel your support through the whole year, and it's been a good year. Several of these people have been promoted this year.
Great.
Captain Johnson, Captain Tonden have been promoted, Lieutenant, so Lieutenant Two has been promoted. I think that's...
Cindy Green?
That Lieutenant, Lieutenant's, oh yeah. Cindy Green was promoted to Deputy Director.
Nice.
Which is, she does an incredible job. Lieutenant Slaughter, we sent her to be our Certified Weapons Instructor. She passed out flying colors. She was actually fourth out of the group of 14, 13 males. She was the only female in the class.
Nice.
And they actually said she had one of the highest scores ever for a female to go through the class. She scored a 98 on the shooting range. Let's see. No, and we also want to thank the council for the passes, of course. We're very much appreciated of that. That's more than you will ever know. The job of in Corrections is really hard. It's hard on the body and the mind, and to know that, you know, at a certain age or a certain amount of time in the service, they can retire, it's big for them. So we are very appreciative of that, and to Clay for helping out of all.
Yep. We really appreciate you. Tell us just a little bit, we did some upgrading and...
Oh, yeah, so we also upgraded all the showers, and they look incredible. They're really good.
That's great. That's good.
The air conditioning units, you know, we're doing those little by little because for the years, it seems like that's the lifespan on them now. They're all starting to go after 30 years.
That's great.
Which is great. We had the grand jury go through the jail about two months ago, month or two ago, and they were very impressed with the professionalism of the officers, and they only had good things to say.
That's great.
About the detention center.
That's great. That's good.
It was really nice.
But good job. Good job. So Lynn?
Well, congratulations to all of you. You're truly appreciated by not only the council, but the county in general, and thank you for all you do.
Yes, you're the invisible side of public safety for the county, but we recognize how vital that work is that you're doing to keep us safe and to keep your clients there safe. Thank you for all you do.
I'll keep with the thanks. I mean, it's a pleasure to have you guys in here every year, throughout the year. I will say, out of all of our departments, you guys always bring the heaviest amount of crew with you, so thank you for that. We love seeing you guys all the time. It's a pleasure to get along, get you guys on course, like Joe you had mentioned, and being that you were humble and the fact that you're still fairly new in your job, congratulations on your promotion as well. So we appreciate all y'all and all you do. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you too, and Cindy, did you want to say anything? You don't? Okay, all right. I just want to give you the chance, but congratulations on all your upgrades to your positions, you know, because you guys deserve a lot. You do a lot, and the county and the surrounding counties do a lot, and thank you. Do a lot, and you do a lot for the other counties too. So that's what I'm trying to say. And Joe, we really, really appreciate you taking on the position in the last, I think you've been in this position about a year now, haven't you?
Yes.
And you're doing a great job, and it seems like you've got a great team behind you that supports you. So we really, really appreciate all the stuff that you're doing for the county and all you do. And Mr. Stamp, you want to say something too?
Yeah, I would just like to also join council in thanking the Director, Deputy Director, all of you. You have a lot of spirit in the group. Always love going down there and seeing you all. But what I'm amazed most about and all of you is your ability to have empathy for others who have made a mistake and got on the wrong side of the track, and you actually work really hard and diligent in trying to make a difference for these people to straighten out their lives. And, you know, that's just an amazing quality that you have, and it's recognized. So thank you for all that you do.
That's a great, that's a great point. So Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Read it into the record, but I'll move that we approve the proclamation.
Yep. Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. You guys want to come on up?
Why do you feel like it's always you guys that knock that over?
Lots of people take turns.
Okay, looking good. All right, everybody, one, two, three.
Okay, next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, is a priority list of 2025 on the Maryland Department of Transportation. Welcome, Ray. How you doing?
Ray Clark, County Engineer, and I'm here with Ken Jacoby. He's our new Assistant County Engineer. He's actually retired from the Federal Highway Administration, so he's also helping us with our roads.
Sure.
As well, so just wanted to bring him on and introduce him to the council. Council, what we have before you is the priority listing. Typically, we forward a list to SHA each year identifying those roads that we would like to see improved. These are state roads. At the same time, we work to try and get that listing from the towns, and then we've gotten, received really no major changes to the town listings. The town of Easton, we had one project that actually has been removed because the traffic signal was installed as part of the Royal Farm Project on US Route 50. So that project was removed. And then ultimately, for the county, when we are seeking potentially USDOT funding, we wanted to make sure that our projects, county projects, are listed as part of the state transportation improvement plan. So those are actually the last three projects on this overall listing. We also have the listing for the Eastern Airport. I think at this point, you know, we're here really to talk with the council about the road priorities. I think one of the things I would just note is that in discussions with the roads department, they really believe that the Ottawa Avenue merging into US Route 50 is the number one project. Last year, our number one project was the Maryland Route 322 slash US Route 50 intersection on the north side. You know, at this point in time, I mean, you know, we have no qualms in how we want to prioritize, which ones are listed, first, second, or third. We just feel that, you know, that one should be listed at this point in time. Again, what we've been hearing from the state is there really isn't a whole lot of funding, so we're not looking at really a major change in seeing a lot of this come off the list. So that being said, we're open to any ideas that the council has as far as the priorities.
Well, I know that St. Michael's has been in the news recently looking for fixes on their Route 33 upgrades, and I presume that we can offer our support to St. Michael's in pursuing those final fixes for that project. I don't know that that belongs in here, but hope that we can continue to support them in getting that situation resolved.
And that's associated with the street sidewalk improvements?
It was associated with the sidewalk improvements, and I think that they have some lingering concerns with replacement of crosswalks and the fact that when they repaved, the drains are all about four inches below the street surface, and so they, it's like a built-in pothole.
Well, we know that there's been some new management there, so we'll go ahead and add that to the list.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know that you've reviewed this list by the Public Works Advisory Board as well and gotten their input on it.
Yes, sir, we did. I can, if you want, I mean, I know the citizens probably don't know, but I can go ahead and go through the listing real quickly.
Let's do that for the...
Yeah, we got a few minutes.
Again, the number one project we currently have right now is the Maryland Route 322, US Route 50 intersection improvements on the north side. Again, we were looking at these associated in conjunction with the proposed hospital. In addition to that, number two was the Maryland Route 33 capacity, safety, and evacuation improvements. This is again associated with St. Michael's and Route 33. Our third project was Maryland Route 329, Royal Oak Road, safety improvements. Again, this is a very narrow road for a lot of those property or people that drive 329. And then we have number four is the Maryland Route 333 Oxford Causeway. As you're entering into Oxford, there's the Causeway there that typically will flood during high tide scenarios. And then our, basically number five, which consists of three projects, these are actually in the town of Easton. What we call 5A is US Route 50, Maryland Route 328, Goldsboro Street Intersection Improvements. 5B would be Maryland Route 50, MD Route 331 Dover Street Intersection Improvements, and 5C, which is US Route 50 Chapel Road Intersection Improvements. Number six would be US 50 and Maryland Route 309, MD 3, I'm sorry, Maryland Route 662 Intersection Capacity Improvements. And again, this is also associated with the hospital, I believe, as well. And then Airport Road and MD 662 US Route 50 Intersection Improvements. That is something that we'll probably have to begin focusing on, especially when we're doing improvements on Airport Road, to synchronize any type of lights that might go out there in that section of the road on Old Centerville Road. And then number eight would be the Ottawa Avenue merging into US Route 50, and then Cordova Road, which is, I believe, the transfer, this is actually a transfer of a section of Cordova Road that currently is maintained by SHA, so we would be seeking to have that portion of that road transferred to SHA. So that's County Road Number 332.
Okay, that sounds great. Anything to add, Mr. Steph? Good, okay. Yep, you guys, you're all good. Okay, well, thank you.
I appreciate too that we're, over the last couple of years, looking at this a little bit more comprehensively, not just highways, but this is going to the whole Department of Transportation, and so we include the airport improvements, which have been really a vital economic development tool here as part of this plan. The Maryland Aviation Administration, of course, is part of the Department of Transportation, is a piece of, a significant piece of, and maybe the one piece of transportation funding that we can see moving forward in the current funding environment.
All right, and that's it. And we want to welcome you, Ken, that's for sure.
Thanks, appreciate the opportunity.
Yep, yep. Go ahead, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this so that we can forward it over to the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, being that we have six minutes left here before we go into our public hearing, do you want to handle County Manager Report?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, council, thank you. Under County Manager Report, I have several items today. First is Board and Committee Appointments, and the first request is Commission on Aging, requesting council consideration to have Grace Lyons, the Community Relation Directors for Candid Light Cove, be appointed as a voting member of the Commission on Aging.
I also move...
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
The next item I have is Habitat for Humanity. Choptank is seeking a letter of support for their grant application for the Maryland Affordable Housing Trust, MAHT, plumbing poverty program funding. Habitat Choptank has completed more than 300 critical home repairs in Talbot and Dorchester Counties. This grant in particular would assist low-income homeowners who need plumbing assistance, installation or replacement of wells slash septic connections, activities to improve water quality, connections to public water sewer systems, renovation of incomplete bathrooms and/or kitchens that include running hot and cold water. No county funds are required for this request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The next item I have, I'll ask Jeanne Haddaway to come up. The Martingham Property Owners Association Incorporated is requesting a letter of support for their grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the Martingham Flood Mitigation and Stormwater Management Project. Again, no county funds are required, and Jeanne Haddaway is here to answer any questions.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the council, and thank you for your consideration. For the record, Jeanne Haddaway-Ricchio. I've been working with the Martingham Property Owners Association on grant writing for their stormwater management project. With me today is Jim Hazen and Bob Leary from the Property Owners Association, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is an avenue of federal funding that remains open today?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes. This will be a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant through the Chesapeake Small Watershed Grant Program.
Excellent. Good that some of these are still available to us.
Yep, yep. Anything else?
Nothing here, thank you.
I'll move approval of the requested letter of support.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Counsel, I have a request from the Department of Emergency Services. They're requesting council approval to utilize $122,685.80 of budgeted local funding to supplement grant funding awarded by the Maryland 911 Board to procure two emergency generators and transfer switches for the Talbot County Public Safety Complex. The Maryland 911 Board will fund the majority of this project at $490,743.20. Total project cost is $613,429. The county will piggyback on a source well contract to procure from Kelly Generator and Equipment. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any further about that.
If not, I will move approval of the purchase.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
And council, I think we have Ray Clark here. I asked Ray to come up. Department of Public Works is requesting council approval to procure the balance of 260 Ranco septic tank affluent pumps at a cost of $1,800, $1,804,400. This purchase was procured through a bid number 23-12 and approved by MDE. Ray Clark is here to explain further or answer any other questions. Ray?
Yes, sir. Counsel? Yes, sir. Council, this is basically a request to go and purchase up to 260 units, but currently we're only going to acquire 20 at this point in time. Since, I guess, the first part of the fiscal year or two, about just before April, we had 14 connections which utilized these tanks. In the month of April, we had 14 installed, so we've currently are using them. I believe we only have four on, you know, in our inventory at this point in time. So this would be basically to buy another 20. What we'll do is advise the council when we're buying them, but this is really kind of a blanket, say, you know, pre-purchase kind of concept. And then we'll come to you and say, hey, we're buying another 20, another 20, so. And we're not only going to, we're only going to buy these as we can install them, we're not going to.
But when you're, when, if, if we're buying them like that, does the price change in six months from now?
We're not seeing anything at this point in time, so that's the good news.
Keep a close eye on that.
Yes, we are. And I think one of the things, just the councils, where the pumps that we're utilizing are actually Franklin Motors, which are typically in well pumps that are manufactured here. So I think, you know, and then ultimately the tanks are actually manufactured out in the West Coast. So I think a lot of the components are actually made here.
Got you.
So what, what that means is that procurement is not going to be a long process?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Council?
Okay. I'll move approval of the requested purchase.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
And Council Ray will stay up here. He has the recommendation to award change order number one through seven for bid 23-11 extension of sewer from the region to St. Michael's wastewater treatment plant to the Mount Pleasant area under Broad Creek and to the villages of Bosman and Nevet as outlined in Resolution 250 Phase C. And specifically, he's asking Council approval to award change orders one through seven to Spring Associates in the amount of $114,845 to be paid for with state revolving loan funds. And again, Ray's here to add any additional information or answer any questions, Ray?
And correct, Council, at the same time, we've also have a contingency that was part of this project. So we still have roughly about $49,000 within that contingency. So this change order will be increasing our contract price from, I believe it's, you know, now, now our contract price would be $1,755,595. So again, we're coming to the County Council for that increase in the contract price. But it is within the contingency funds that we've presented to the Maryland Department of Environment.
And this is, this is in addition to an earlier change order when we ran into compacted
Yes.
sediments?
Yes.
And I see that this, this is, this is actually a whole series of change orders of small, smaller that you're aggregating together?
And, and there were a lot, a lot of them were field changes that were occurring at the time, so ultimately, there is, the larger one is actually the Forest Main within Mount Pleasant. Because of the modification of our route coming under Broad Creek, we're modifying our potential, instead of coming down Mount Pleasant and then kind of turning after the first, on the second turn, we're coming up on that first turn. So we're kind of building it the opposite way, so.
This is, this is not a looping, this is?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just.
Okay, any other questions?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second to approve the change orders. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, all right, good job, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Counsel, that concludes your County Manager Report for this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, good job, Mr. Stepp. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and get the public hearing started. So we're going to start off with the constant yield, and I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Lusher to go ahead and read the constant yield.
The County Council, in the fiscal year 2026, proposed budget is proposing to adopt a real property tax rate of 79.26 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for all properties located outside the incorporated towns. This does not include an additional education supplement and is 0.16 cents higher than the current real property tax rate. This rate is 3.3% higher than the constant yield rate of 76.70 cents and will generate 1.1,428,322 dollars more than, more in property tax revenues in fiscal year 26 from the unincorporated area of the county. Properties located within the incorporated towns will again be granted a tax rate differential, which remains unchanged from the prior year and sets their real property tax rates between 6.01 and 13.3 cents lower than the county rate. The County Council will not adopt the fiscal year 2026 tax rate today. The fiscal year 2026 tax rate will be adopted as part of the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 annual budget and appropriation ordinance currently scheduled for adoption on Tuesday, May 27, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lusher, so Martha, you want to come?
You want Mrs. Miranda to read the title of the bill?
Yep, that's fine, yep. Madam Secretary, could you read the title of the bill, please?
Bill number 1585, An Act to Establish the 2025-2026 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Stepp.
Thank you, Council, appreciate that. And it's an exciting day. We're making one step closer to adopting this budget that everyone's worked so hard on. I'd just like to take a minute to thank the Council, recognize Martha Sparks and Caitlin Foster-Clark, as well as Jessica, Jessica Morris, and all the, all the department heads that have worked really hard and the heads of agencies and organizations. It's been a collaborative process and we've worked really hard to get to this point. I do want to say a couple of things about the budget. Number one, moving into this year's budget, like any year, we had to take a look at what our risks are out there. And clearly, what we saw is, you know, there, there are significant policy shifts occurring at the federal level. At the federal level, we're seeing grant funds that are being frozen, some are being eliminated. So it's a bit of a shifting landscape on the federal level. Secondly, on the state level, we're seeing shifting cost to local counties, in some cases municipalities. In our case, the most significant would be the shifting of teacher pensions, which is traditionally an obligation of state government. They have shifted 50% of those to the counties with an indication there may be more coming. So we're seeing that shift for state obligations to the county. Further, we, under risk, we see economic pressures. We consider, we continue to see escalating costs for materials and workforce challenges. We, we still see a lot of competition for talent, if you will. And we've been addressing those. And moving forward, what strategies are we using? Council, you all know that Talbot County has a long history of a conservative process of budgeting. We run a very frugal government, which forces creativity. I'm very proud of our department heads and your leadership to ensure that we, we use our brains to figure out how to do more with less. And we have done that. This year, over the last several years, we've had to address a number of priority issues relative to public safety and education. And because of that, the last several years, you've seen an escalating cost in the annual budgets. But this year, working with Council, a decision was made to try to flatten that out and try to live within our means where we are. So we did a few things to do that. As you see, the budget we're putting together is 161,52,000. It's less than last year's budget. We, we actually froze all positions, no new positions in the general fund budget. We continued the conservative capital investments. So our capital improvement project, which Martha will go into, we, we made a significant investment through our capital improvement project in previous years to really inject, inject into our community opportunities for construction and what have you. And this year, we've reduced the amount of money in the capital improvement program to finish what we started. So that was a second strategy that we used. The other thing we looked at is implementing reserve fund policies. The county has been working real hard to increase their fund balance to make sure we have a reserve in case of the unknown. In addition, we've implemented the reserve policies through our consults, which Martha will talk about. And then, of course, we continue to target things on three fronts, personnel, processes and projects, where we continue to support our personnel to stay competitive, work on processes to find deficiencies and address projects throughout this next year. I want to hand it over to Martha, who will do a deep dive into the budget. And again, Council, just want to thank you for the process and your leadership.
Good afternoon, Council, Martha Sparks, Finance Director. On April 15th, the County Council of Talbot County introduced the fiscal year 26 budget of $161,52,000. As you know, this budget was formulated during meetings between the departments and agencies, finance and the county manager, with subsequent work sessions with Council. Each request was thoughtfully considered, and the budget that is before us now is a result of those efforts. So I thought I'd start with a recap of the success we've had with the fiscal year 2025 budget as of currently, which is the very beginning, almost, seems like the middle of May is right around the corner. We are on track to receive the revenues that we have projected, and we're going to be a little over on that and a little underspent on expenditures, so that's a good place for us to find ourselves in. This is primarily attributable to our income tax revenues, which have been good so far this year. The FY '25 budget has supported improvements to general government services, communications and overall government effectiveness. One specific example would be the communications that the county now has with our public and the community, spearheaded by our communications manager, Sarah Kilman. She's done an excellent job with social media. She has a program now called Engage Talbot, where she's engaging the public related to the comp plan and also the budget. So this is seeking, this is a more digital way of reaching out to our citizens, and this has been supported with the '25 budget. Other examples are the strength in our IT resources have improved our network connections, our cybersecurity and efficiency in payments to vendors and our employees. Progress that we've made on capital projects include contracting with a company to provide computer-aided dispatch, moving us to the next step of acquiring a new system, completion of the new public safety building. As the county manager mentioned, we are in the process of finishing our CIP projects that we've already started. We're not there yet, but we're close. And this new public safety building is for our sheriff and EMS offices. We also have entered into a new Motorola lease that's been signed for the purchase of 911 consoles to be installed in the new building. We've had paving of main connector roads throughout the county, including Airport Road, and we've also continued construction on the St. Michael's Library and renovation project. So the fiscal year 2026 general fund budget of $161,52,000 has been introduced. This budget was formulated using the county's historically conservative budgeting methodology with some moderate adjustments. These budget practices have served the county well and have placed us in a healthy financial position. The budgeting methodology involves modestly projecting revenues and evaluating the need and impact of expenditures, and it also involves a strategic use of our fund reserves. This practice is deliberate. It forces the county to carefully consider the addition of recurring expenses such as full-time positions. All of this combined has helped Talbot County to retain low property and income tax rates and to keep other fees down. The effect of this budgeting strategy has also grown our reserves. This has placed the county in a strong position to weather the storms of financial uncertainty, financial uncertainty that we have only begun to face from the federal government and the state of Maryland. In this recently passed legislative session, the state of Maryland mitigated their budget deficits by pushing their liabilities down to the counties. The new reserve policies approved by Council early of this year provide funding and risk mitigation strategies that aided us and also aided us in formulating this budget. With new reserve policies in place, the county has shifted their budget projections for income tax revenues, recordation and transfer tax revenues in line with historical trends. The FY '26 budget has prioritized investments in infrastructure through completion of existing projects and new ones, like ADA upgrades to county buildings, county storage facilities and county pool facilities, just to name a few. Talbot County property tax rates, as far as budget highlights and discussing our revenues, Talbot County property tax rates are calculated in accordance with the Talbot County Charter and in accordance with the Maryland Education Article, Section 5-104, which involves 2% additional revenues over the SD, SD certified revenues and 1 cent to the calculated property tax rate, and that was approved by voters in 2020 and 2024. Any increases in school funding can pass through the education supplement per the Maryland Education Article, but we have not included one at this time. There is no change to the income tax rate. Income tax revenues are volatile and will be even more so moving forward as a result of the state of Maryland approving higher tax rates for half-millionaires and millionaires. The last time this type of change in the tax rate was implemented, the county experienced decreased revenues by a 40% from one year to the very next. By maintaining Talbot County's low-income tax rate, we hope to mitigate the migration of our high-income earners. And there have been no increases in the schedule of fees. In discussing reserves, which this chart illustrates how Talbot County reserves have grown since 2016, but in discussing reserves, I want to make sure that I note that reserves for any government entity should be used only for non-recurring purchases, projects or payments, and not to be used on recurring expenses such as personnel. Talbot County reserves provide several benefits to the county. First, it affords the opportunity to demonstrate strong financial management of the county to credit rating agencies. This enables the county to obtain the best interest rates in going out to bond, which we'll be doing shortly. This also provides us, our new reserve policies also provide us the budget strategy we need to, when we encounter risk because of these unknown forces that could be affecting us in the future. That is also one of the risk policies that we have in our fund balance reserves. And in this chart, the FY '25, what I've done is taken FY '24 fund balance and moved that into the categories, the fund balance reserve categories that Council approved. For FY '26 budget highlights regarding expenditures, the largest portion of Talbot County's recurring operating expenditures go toward funding Talbot County schools. This includes funding for TCPS at the required local share funding of 55.1 million, additional mandated funding for the Blueprint Coordinator at $127,500, capital projects of $260,500, and an increase in debt service for Capital Elementary Project at basically $2.1 million. For FY '26, the TCPS appropriation and debt service for facilities account for 42.9% of the county's FY '26 operating expenditures. Expenditures in the FY '26 budget also include a 2.5% cost of living adjustment and one performance-based step for county employees. There are new, new general government positions, as the county manager mentioned. Fund balance reserves will be used for the investment in $3.84 million in capital outlay, which is equipment purchases, 13.7 million for capital projects and 1.7 million for recreation fund projects. And as I mentioned, the state of Maryland has mitigated their budget deficits by pushing liabilities down to us. So now the county is responsible for paying an additional $1.11 million. the county is responsible for paying an additional $176,000, which is related to 50% of the cost of the local SDAT office. Previously, we paid only 40%, so now we're paying 90% of support for that office. This has been included in the budget. $440,000 for teachers' retirement. Previously, this has been 100% funded by the state of Maryland. This is a totally new mandate from the state and will be billed to us directly from the state. We'll need to amend the current budget to include this. That $440,000 is not currently included in the budget that we have, and I'll be discussing that later. Another item that the state has pushed down to the counties is $12,858 related to community college retirement. So the chart you see here is a summary of our general fund revenues. As you can see, the largest part of, the largest of our revenues are property taxes and income tax. And I should note that each year, the education supplement portion of the property tax rate resets to zero, which is what you can see in the chart. Those revenues are folded into total property tax revenues. They become a permanent cumulative part of the tax rate in future years. The education supplement portion of the property tax rate can only be used for increases in a new budget year. All revenues have been increased to reflect historical trends, slightly modifying the county's historically conservative budget As I mentioned previously, the county's two primary sources of revenues are property tax revenues, which comprise 42% of general fund revenues, and income tax revenues are 24.5% of general fund revenues. Other local taxes, such as recordation and transfer tax, account for 9.9% of general fund revenues. In general fund expenditures, the net increase in funding to Talbot County schools from FY25 is $539,000. As I mentioned before, those zero out, and then they become, they fold up into the new requirement of the appropriation to Talbot County schools. Debt service for the schools will increase as a result of the bond issuance that will occur in upcoming weeks. General fund debt has also increased related to the 911 center. The county has entered into a multi-year lease for new 911 radio consoles for the public safety building. Operating costs for the county have increased by 5.6% as a result of the fixed costs related to our workforce. Capital outlay, which are one-time costs for vehicles, equipment, and small improvements, had an increase of 1.2 million. There are also one-time increases and transfers to the recreation fund for capital outlay and CIP projects for the community center and Hockneck Golf Course, totaling $2.3 million. General fund expenditures. So the largest portion is education, and that 40.2%, I will point out, is looking at total general fund expenditures. That includes CIP as well before the total that I mentioned, as 42.9% was just for recurring operating expenditures. This education 40.2% also includes not just Talbot County Public Schools, but also the library and Chesapeake College. And these categories are also consistent with how it is presented in the budget ordinance and in our annual comprehensive financial report. Public safety accounts for 24.7%, with general government only 11.9% of general fund expenditures, public works at 5.1%. Related to budget amendments, as mentioned, the state of Maryland has pushed these costs down to the counties. So now, we're now responsible for paying $440,000 for the teachers' retirement. Previously, this has been funded by the state. This is a new mandate, and the $12,858 related to community college pensions. The funding for the teachers' pensions will, both of these items will need to be amended and added to the FY26 budget. I need to take this time to speak to the importance of the education supplement and using that as a vehicle to raise revenues to cover these additional costs related to teachers' pensions. Talbot County is very limited in the revenues that it can generate. It can generate 2% over SDAT certified revenues from the previous year, and 1 cent on the tax rate can be added. These new revenues are used to support general government expenditures. The education supplement can only be used to provide funding for that year's increase in education. If we don't use it, then we'll need to be, then that additional increase will be, need to be provided by the revenues that are currently used to support general government services. These costs above are liabilities of the state of Maryland. The raising, the revenues for the teachers' pensions falls on the counties instead of the state. We can't use reserves to fund these recurring expenditures. This creates an unsustainable budget. If we don't use the education supplement, we'll always be in the hole for the $440,000, so to speak. And we can't play catch-up in a subsequent year with the education supplement. And our tax increases by our charter's design, they are moderate increases, and that is reflected in our standing as a county with the lowest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. The charter requires us to live within our means. It forces county staff to find the most effective and efficient ways to provide government services. This chart is a history of property tax rates. The proposed property tax rate is .7926 for county, for properties outside of incorporated areas. And as you can see, and I mentioned earlier, the education supplement is not cumulative. It resets every year. This chart shows the history of a county tax bill for a home assessed at $300,000. I'm sure that assessment has gone up over this period of time, but we have to keep this stagnant so you can see the change.
Apples to apples.
Yes, apples to apples. It gets a little conflated when you start mixing that up with the assessments. But you can see this year's tax rate will cause an increase of $4.80 on a house, on a property that its value is assessed at 300,000. And here is an example of the property tax bill that residents would receive. On the screen now are the 2025 county property tax rates currently, and as you can see, Talbot is at the bottom. And that rate, the .7910, contains an educational supplement Also, local income tax rates, Talbot County is second lowest in the state at .024. I would note that in August, on August 23rd, 2024, we went through a rating with Fitch. It was, they were rerating us under their new criteria, and we, they affirmed, or reaffirmed our rating of AAA. And they mentioned in their report that Talbot County's financial resilience is driven by the combination of its high revenue control assessment and high expenditure control assessment, culminating in an ample budgetary flexibility assessment. And Moody's Investor Service, when they rated us in September 14th, 2022, they mentioned that financially, the county is very strong, and the management team is generally conservative in its budgeting. And they noted our credit strengths of low long-term liabilities with a manageable long-term capital plan, and they also noted our very strong reserve position. I would note that budget deliberations, the final budget deliberations for council will be Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. With budget adoption on Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, the public is invited to submit written public comments by Thursday, May 8th, 2025, to public comment at talbotcountymd.gov. And for more information on the FY26 proposed budget, bill number 1585, you can visit our website at talbotcountymd.gov.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Great job.
Good job.
Okay, counsel. Got any questions?
Says it all.
Says it all.
All right.
Yep.
Just in an expression of appreciation for Ms. Sparks for getting us through with, to this point, with all that clarity that you just presented up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything?
Yeah.
Okay, anything?
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Like we said, it's a public hearing, so if you don't mind, we'll call your names, and you come on up, and I'll give you three minutes. We've got this special clock up here, okay? And we'll give you three minutes for individual and five minutes for an organization.
For clarity, are we, are we combining the constant yield tax rate hearing as well as the budget hearing? Are they the same, one of the same public hearing?
I'd say so.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Clarify that.
All things budget, let's talk.
It says talk.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
So the first, the first on the sheet here is Cliff Coppersmith from Chesapeake College.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Cliff Coppersmith. I reside at 145 McKenney Lane in Sinnerville, Maryland. Wish I was in Easton, but that didn't work out for me.
You wouldn't hold that in question.
It's a pleasure to be with you today. I'm joined by my CFO and Vice President for Administrative Services Karen Smith, who I think, like your staff, shares a real value in conservative and enlightened leadership of the budget process. I'm simply here today to thank you all for your support of the college. Obviously, we had a very positive meeting together in the Old County meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we just appreciate the unanimous support we had from this council for our operational budget and for our capital project. As you are also experiencing, we still have some headwinds ahead of us. There's a special session of the Maryland Legislature in October, in which we anticipated the possibility of a cut to our state allocation. We hope that doesn't occur, but we are preparing ourselves for that possibility. And also, just recently announced, there are several federal changes to some grants that are going to impact the college, namely our upward bound and trio programs, our...
Can you say that again? I didn't quite hear.
We have several Department of Education grant programs.
Okay.
Upward bound and trio. Trio assists existing college students to stay in school and finish with the goal of getting them to their transfer institution after they're done with us.
Okay.
And then upward bound, which we do have a program with Talbot County, helps us get high school students to college, ideally with us, but they can go anywhere once they complete the program. And we have probably roughly about 40 students currently enrolled from Talbot County that will be participating in summer programs this summer. The issue is, is of course, renewal of the grant for next year, which is somewhat in doubt. It's been put on the cut list.
Okay. And right off the top of your head, do you know how much that grant is?
Uh, I think it's a couple of million dollars. It goes for, I think, five years, and typically it's renewable once we meet compliance.
I see.
And that's always been the case in the past, but now it's been questioned by federal policy.
Okay. Good, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Dana Newman from Talbot County Free Library.
Thank you for being here and supporting the library. My name's Dana Newman. I'm the library director. I live at 6295 Bosman Nevet Road in Nevet, Maryland. I have with me Mary Pellicano, who's also on your list, so she'll be talking a little bit, too. I just want to thank you for your support. You've been wonderful supporting the library. This is the 100th year of the library serving the community and serving Talbot County. I know it's 365 years coming up for Talbot County. We have been a proud organization supporting our community, and we want to continue to do that for the next 100 years. I just want to highlight a few things. We too, as Cliff said, we are facing some federal funds where we don't know what's going to happen next year in regards to those funding. So we have a staff development fund that we get from the state that comes through Library Services Technology Act of about $15,000, and we don't know if we're going to be receiving that next year. The other item that we may or may not receive is grant funding for any type of innovative programming that we want to do. And we've pretty much received, it is a competitive grant process, but we've pretty much received anywhere between $6,000 to $60,000 a year in that program. And we don't know what the, you know, just like you, we don't know what the results for next year are going to be for those funds. So we may have to find some of that funding in our budget for next year in regards to the staff development monies. So I want to thank the council again for your support of the St. Michael's project, in particular for the $100,000 that you are giving us for the collection. Without those monies, we would not be able to provide new materials for the, for that project. Also, I just want to talk a little bit about the importance of libraries. Libraries have always been centers of lifelong education. It has been true of ancient, medieval, and colonial libraries, no less than modern ones. In our early years, it was through offering services to support really information, the looking for information and education. But we're so much more than that now. We serve our community by providing resources, technology, and community connections that foster continuous personal and professional growth throughout an individual's life. And so really, that's what I wanted to emphasize, that is that our libraries are providing lifelong education, and we do that for free. The only other thing I wanted to say is that we, we do ask that our staff receive the same salary increases that the county is considering for their own staff. So thank you very much, and I'm going to pass it off to Mary.
Thank you. My name is Mary Pellicano, 28789 Utram Street, Easton, and I am the treasurer for the Library Board of Trustees. And on behalf of myself, the community, and the library board, I'd like to thank the council for your continued support over the years. Like Dana said, this is our 100th anniversary, and we have a lot to celebrate, especially most recently, the much-needed St. Michael's branch renovation that Dana spoke about, that is now underway thanks to your help and support. It's a, with a long time in the planning process, and we could not have begun the project without your support. Your investment in the library system is not only essential to our success, but it is a powerful affirmation to the vital role that libraries play in the community, which becomes more important under uncertain economic times, which we are experiencing at present. It's also a wise investment. Taxpayer dollars that go to support the library help every resident from cradle to grave. There are few other publicly funded institutions that benefit everyone in the community, from early literacy programs for our youngest patrons, to computer classes for seniors, and everything in between, from homework help to students, to job seekers, to gardeners, with our seed library. Has something for everyone. It's not just about books anymore. So thanks again for your continued support. We invite you to help celebrate our 100th anniversary with us. We have lots of fun things going on over the year.
And we've left a list of programs that we hope that you all will attend coming up. And one of the first ones, and we have friends with us back here, is going to be our Introduction to Opera program on May 22nd, and I hope all of you will attend our 100 Years Library Birthday Party Saturday, August 23rd.
Is that Opera, the Opera Bears?
No, it's not the Opera Bears. If you want to see the Opera Bears, they will be a summer program for kids.
That is not to be missed.
It's not to be missed, definitely not.
No, it's not the Opera Bears. If you want to see the Opera Bears, they will be a summer program for kids. That is not to be missed.
It's not to be missed, definitely not. And we look forward to the next 100 years with your support.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, it's, uh, good having the opportunity to talk to you again.
Yep.
Uh, I also want to thank you for the opportunity to offer comments about the fiscal year '26 budget as proposed by, by your council, our council. It's an important day here in Easton for a lot of people, and many of our neighbors are now voting for key officials who will serve on the Eastern Town Council during the coming years. And this room, and in this room today, you're inviting public input on how to spend $160 million, more or less, to meet the needs of Talbot County during the coming year. I congratulate you and your county government staff for presenting a budget proposal in such a, an understandable format. You don't always get that, but this is different. Combination of bulleted highlights, circular graphs, and comparative data to demonstrate your conservative approach as you constructed the budget plan for 2026. Your particular, your presentation of comparative data is particularly useful in showing budget trends in the, in showing budget trends and in highlighting Talbot County's tax, tax ranking among other Maryland counties. Based on your proposal, you expect almost 67% of your revenue next year to come from two sources, property tax and local income tax paid by county residents. The total of these two sources is expected to be $107 million. That's a very, very impressive figure for a rural county on the eastern shore of Maryland. Regarding property tax, recent real estate assessments in Talbot County by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation have officially been described as substantial increases. As county residents pay increased property taxes based upon these increases, county tax revenue should certainly increase accordingly during the next several fiscal years, possibly producing even more revenue than, than the county needs. If you determine at this time next year that revenue has exceeded your budget needs, you'll have the opportunity to reverse a recent trend by, in fact, reducing the property tax rate. I realize that you face some serious budgetary uncertainties during the next few years caused by federal and state government circumstances that are beyond your control. However, unlike many rural counties in Maryland, which rely heavily on grants from either Washington or Annapolis or both, Talbot County seems to be much more capable of sustaining itself. Your fiscal '26 budget plan shows about 2%, a little more than 2% of projected revenues coming from federal and state grants. In the next few months, I look forward to developing a better understanding of your county's budget process and, and your priorities as you develop them, but I will close at this point by simply thanking you again for inviting public comments here today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rigan. Appreciate it.
I can only imagine how difficult it's going to be for some rural counties to deal with these, these budgetary uncertainties. It's going to be extraordinarily difficult. You folks have done a great job of managing the resources and establishing appropriate priorities, and you deserve congrat, congratulations for that.
Thank you.
And you have resources to spend. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all who have signed up in advance, so Mr. Callahan, if you want to open it up to anybody else who wishes to speak.
Sure. So would anybody else like to come on up and, and comment on the budget?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Charles Wainbros. I live at 8505 Tillman Allen Road in Whitman. I am the manager of Brooklyn's Place of Talbot County Senior Center, and I just want to thank you all for your continued support of our senior centers. As you know, we have one in St. Michael's at the YMCA, and we have the one here in Easton. And yes, we're faced with a lot of uncertainties because we don't know what's going to happen at the federal level or at the state level as far as funding is, is concerned, but your support means a lot to me and to the, the people that come to the centers, especially those that are on the Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals program, because we see in the numbers increase, especially our Meals on Wheels program, and, and it's needed. It is definitely needed in the community. We need the building for the people that want to get out of the house. There are so many folks that are isolated, and we try to get them to come in. They don't have to come every day. They don't have to stay all day long, but if they just want to get in and socialize for a little bit, do a little bit of exercise, enjoy some of our entertainment or whatever, we appreciate them coming in. And I will say that this is Older Americans Month, so if you have an opportunity, look at the schedule and stop by one day because we have all types of entertainment and stuff going on, and we will be having a senior prom in June. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but you all will be, will receiving an invitation to come out and party with us. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charles.
Yep. Anybody else like to come up and say a few words about the budget? Glad to have you up here.
I've said enough.
You've said enough. Okay. Okay.
So on this matter, written comments will be accepted by the county council until Thursday, May 8th at noon. Emailed comments can be sent to publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov, and you can now recess the hearing until this evening.
Yep. I'll go ahead and, does that take a vote, or?
We need a motion of recess, I believe, right?
Yeah, we need a motion.
We'll make a motion of recess until the...
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second to recess, and tonight, because there's going to be another hearing tonight at, at 7:00 at the Eastern High School at the cafeteria. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milke?
Aye.
Okay, I'll see you tonight. Thank you.
See you then.